Welcome to our January Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we do roll call first?
Well, we can do roll call and then...
Okay, do that and evacuation and then we go to the repair. That makes better sense.
All right, Paulette Frye.
Here.
John Cream.
Yeah.
Scott Latham.
Here.
Brian Tobin.
Paul, I mean, Judy Pochette.
In the event of an emergency, visitors are advised that they may exit this room from the one side door which leads directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobile since this may cause traffic problems and block incoming emergency vehicles.
Thank you, Patty. Before we start our regular meeting, Dr. Morrow and Mr. Scheid and Mr. Dregon are going to go over a presentation of our proposed repair projects for use of our repair reserve fund.
So, you know, Southold has had the fortunate situation where we've utilized repair reserves. I think this is the third one now, two prior to me and now this one. And it gives us the opportunity to really repair our buildings without having to wait for bonds or wait for large amounts of money to be put into budgets. And in the long run, that ultimately, you know, creates a cost savings because when you don't repair minor problems, they turn into major problems. And then they cost great deals of money. So, a long time ago, you know, you all got together and you voted on having a repair reserve, and it has been functioning really well for the last, you know, 12, 14 years or however many years it's been in place. So, we are looking to put together a number of different areas where we're going to be doing repairs over the next handful of years, answer any questions that may be put in place, and then, you know, get approval on moving forward with a new one. I'm going to introduce Chuck Scheid now, our Assistant Superintendent for Business. Him and Anthony Dregon, our Director of Facilities, are going to share with you just some examples of some of the different types of repairs that we either have done or will be doing around the district.
I think it's important to note that this money is already in a fund. It's not going to cost the taxpayers any additional money. So, it's been, over the years, we've been putting money in the repair reserve fund.
Correct. There's two parts, right? So, tonight, we're looking at approving the spending of the reserve. But like you said, the other part is we have the funding available. It's actually the last slide, or second to last slide, we'll talk a little bit about the funding. What I'd like to do is turn it over to Mr. Dregon. He's going to go through the details, and then I'm going to pop back up again, talk about the funding.
So, we're just going to show you some projects that we know are going to need some attention.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh-oh.
I think keep in mind when we go through this that there's only certain projects that this fund can be used for.
Correct.
So, not replacement. I learned a long time ago, there's certain things that you cannot use these funds for.
Right, mostly repairs, right? So, we have some doors that we have, that need repair, various stages of repair. Some of them are the lock sets as we move along to swipe card access. Others are closers and hinges and repairs such as that. So, some painting repair, we want to, you know, we're looking to continue our program with, like we did on the first floor here with all walls, with that epoxy paint. It does help repair the walls, they, it makes them stronger and certainly cleaner. And aesthetically, we think it did a really nice job. Boiler, we always need to have money to set aside in case we have some boiler issues because sometimes those repairs can be costly and outside of our operating budget. So, we always include boiler repairs in our repair reserves. So, we redid our parking lot about five years ago during the construction project. But now you can see there have been some seams that are opening, you know, some cracks. And every five to seven years is really when you should, you know, maintain and repair the cracks there so it doesn't get bigger. So, we have a, these are just a few of the samples, but as you walk around, look around the parking lot, especially as the winter season comes and the ice and the thawing of, can create these to be worse. So, we'd like to get these repaired before we have bigger parking lot problems. Roof work is always ongoing here. We are, we're trying to, we're doing a very good job attacking some of the older roofs, but we still have some, like the middle school roof, for instance, over there on the left is one of the oldest roofs that we have. So, that could use, you know, some repair work. We also have some gutters, like the picture on the right, there's a hole in that gutter right there. That's something that I like to combine with the roof only because of its location and material. It's a lot easier if just, we don't really have the equipment to fix that in-house. Let me go back. So, windows, we do have some window issues and repairs throughout the year. We'll get cracks and, you know, they start adding up after a while when you, when they happen. Floor, wall, ceiling repair, we're doing a really good job in the high school of getting rid of the older nine-by-nine tiles, but we still have some out there in some rooms. So, we'd like to continue with that. And the, in the middle school, we have an older ceiling in some of those classrooms, an older ceiling style that is very difficult to repair. It's almost, well, anyway, we'd like to, we'd like to continue with that work in there. We've, we redid a few already, and we'd like to continue on. So, again, we have some floors here, you know, our floors in the elementary school especially, this is the high school picture, but some flooring in the elementary school, we have some issues with tiles popping and some repair work that is going to be needed. It's a bigger project, but we're going to start looking at some cost estimates for it. And just to show you some of these, one of the, if we go into a locker program, we're going to have to do possibly some wall repair. So, that, depending on how we, how we structure that, we might have some, we're not sure what's behind some of those lockers. Bathroom repairs, we have some partitions that have been beaten up over the years. So, we have to make some repairs to those. Some of our hand dryers are becoming harder and harder to repair, so we need to do some, get some replacements for those. So, the picture on the left, that is some brickwork, masonry work, some spalling that has happened over the years. That's like the oldest part of the building right there. So, that's a project we'd like to take a look at before it gets any worse. You know, it's, it's something that we're going to have to look into, you know, sealing it a little bit better so that the weather doesn't beat it up. And the picture on the right is some outdoor electric, we've had some electrical issues with our outdoor lighting recently. So, we want to, we've made some repairs, but we need to continue on. Okay, I'll go back.
Some of the pictures that you saw, examples of, our architect came in and he crawled through pretty much every crawl space and attic area, and he took, how many thousands of pictures, Anthony?
Yeah, thousands.
You know, he has probably 4,000 pictures. And then he brings us the things that are the most pressing, like the sprawling on the brick needs to be sealed. Otherwise, eventually, those bricks will go bad, and then we'll have to take down that entire wall and put a new one up, which is incredibly expensive in a 100-year-old part of the building. Sealing them is, you know, there's a cost to it, and we would do that with our repair reserve money because it is a repair to the brick, but the cost is, it's minute compared to taking down a 100-year-old wall of bricks that's 60 feet high and putting all new ones up, you know, so...
And that would be a capital project, I would think.
And that would probably be a capital project because I don't think we would be able to build it into a budget. It would probably be too large. You know, so that's where all of those images came from, and most of them were examples of, you know, there was a couple floors that looked beautiful, that's because we did the work on those already. That repair was done with the existing repair reserve. So, there was a little bit of what needs to be done and some of what has been done in there. So, Chuck is just going to share with you the actual numbers from this reserve.
Okay, thank you. Exactly. So, as I mentioned earlier, so we have available in our repair reserve $676,000, actual cash ready. It gets audited each year. The reserve is set up according to the state control or the state education department for projects like the one we have now, again, because it's typically difficult to budget for, it's expensive. So, the repair reserve allows us this other pot of money to get the work done. What's interesting, we're also, we're returning $100,000 that was previously approved in 2015. As you see with the slides, we typically have specific projects, areas that we're working on. In 2015, I believe it's the PPS office, we were going to repair it and change it to suit the needs, and it actually, we covered it under the bond project. So, because that specific project list wasn't done, we have no need to, we're not going to plan on spending it. So, we're going to return it, put it back into the pot. So, now we have available 776,000 technically available. And the estimated price, the cap that we're going to use is 600,000 for this, these are the projects that were listed. And again, each year, we look at our, that funding comes from the general fund surplus each year, and we decide based on a lot of different factors to see what's the best avenue, how much to fund the repair reserve. And I just want to give an update because it doesn't happen very often, although we did have two in one calendar year, is just an emergency project. So, what we have tonight is a repair reserve hearing where we have kind of basically time listing the projects. But sometimes what happens arises where there's an emergency, something comes up very quickly, and we don't have time to put it in the paper and get things done. So, we have the board approve emergency projects. So, in March of 2022, we had our, the roof above the gymnasium was leaking, and again, we just thought the, to expedite everything, we had a budget of roughly 180,000. I believe it's mostly done, to date, we've spent 163,000. The funds were replenished for this. We're allowed to, up to two years to fund it back, which we've already did 100%. And we'll see where we stand again, if there's a balance of the one, difference between the 180, we'll give it back to the reserve. And recently, the latest was July of '22, we had a boiler project, I think it was for the tank where it was leaking, same thing to get things done, and then the length of time to order something was, we wanted to make sure the heat was up and running. So, again, that was approved for, how much was that? That was about...
119,000.
119, 120,000. Again, to date, we mostly completed it, we spent $82,000 and change for that project.
I have a question about that. It says it's going to be funded in June of 2023. Why can't that 120 come out of the repair reserve? Why does it have to? Because that was a true repair, although it was an emergency, and I know there was no time for a hearing, can't that money...
Well, there wasn't enough, there was only 100 left in the old repair reserve, so that, that could fund the 83, but it couldn't have funded the 120 that we had asked for.
Well, we have 676,000.
We have 676, but to use any of that, we have to go through a hearing. So, we don't have the ability to use any of that yet. After this...
After this, well, that's, I think, my question is, can you retro this into...
Yeah, that's the question really is, can it...
Retro, you're talking about the 82,000?
Yes, or the 100, whatever it ends up being when it's all said and done with that boiler. Because we're going to have to find that in the budget for this year, is what you're saying then.
No, that's right. We'll end the '22, '23 school year, assuming we have a surplus, we're going to fund the money back to the repair reserve.
But if we, but why do that if we have repair reserve funds? That's my question. Can we not?
The rule is with the repair reserve, you have to have either a hearing or declare it an emergency.
But we did declare that an emergency, if I recall correctly.
Right. So, those funds that we've spent this year, the 82,000, as of right now, it's coming out of the repair reserve fund.
Right. So, does it have to be replaced, is my question?
By statute, I think, I believe it does.
I think for a trailer, does it have to, as opposed to the general fund budget?
No.
No, as opposed to just leaving it coming out of the repair reserve?
The 600,000.
And then if there's surplus, whatever odd amount gets put into the repair reserve each year? Am I not being clear in my question?
I mean, I just, I'm close, I'm just not understanding 100% the question.
I don't understand why we can't take that, let's just say $100,000, okay, for the boiler repair, out of the repair reserve and not necessarily have to replenish it. Certainly, if there's surplus, that'll just generally go into the repair reserve. But does it have to be earmarked 82,437? Anthony, do you know what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying.
I think maybe from a state accounting standpoint, there might, there may be some issues with it.
Yeah.
But I can't speak to it.
I think, I think really the only difference would be if you take the 82 out of the 600,000 that we just said we will use, then you'd have, you know, 520,000 to use on projects that we estimated could go as high as 600,000. That's the only difference. You know, whether we, because when you fund the money back into the repair reserve, if it's not allocated to a project...
Right, that I understand.
And projects, it can't be used.
That I understand.
You know, whether it's, because we had a repair reserve emergency meeting with the board, I would also think that it would be murkied up if we didn't pay that money back, you know, procedurally. It's going to all end up in the same exact place, is what you're saying.
Right, right, right.
And you're completely right. But I believe procedurally, when they come in and audit us, they're going to say, why didn't you pay this back? And we're going to say, well, you know, if we had reserve, we put it back in there anyway. And, you know, basically, it's just what we're calling it. It's not a matter...
Okay, I get it, but it kind of seems...
A little redundant?
Yes.
And New York State...
It sounds, it sounds like a requirement, if you're going to use emergency, you know, on this side, you got to, you got to balance it out.
Yes, we can do.
We'll give you the leeway to use it, but we're going to come looking for it.
Yeah, it's going to end up in the same exact place. And the truth is, the 2023, you know, we have two years to pay that 82,000, to refund that 82,000. The only way it'll be done this year is if there's enough surplus to do it. If not, we'll do it over the next two years, you know.
Okay. I hate to assume we're going to have...
Yeah.
Surpluses. I don't think that...
Yeah.
That's all. Okay.
So, if you, if anybody has any questions, you know, this is a, you know, it's a public forum where anybody from the community or the board can ask questions, and then either Anthony, myself, or Chuck can answer them.
Okay, of course, I have one more. Because I know not too many years ago, we redid the restrooms. Okay, my question is that the partitions that have to be replaced, is this due to constant vandalism in the restrooms? And if it is, is it the boys or the girls, or...
They're mostly the boys.
And does it happen often enough that it's a problem and we should address it?
You know, it's not, it's always a problem when something new gets put in and it gets ripped down, right? So, that's always a problem, but I wouldn't say it's rampant.
Okay.
But clearly, you know, we love to stop it if we could.
I do, I know that it is reported, and the people in the building do address it, you know, whenever...
Which restroom?
Which restroom are we talking about now?
Yes, I'm guessing.
This one over here has some issues.
Is it the locker room as well?
The locker room, I'm noticing that the lockers are getting a little bit, you know...
Destroyed.
A little bit more and more. That would be another bigger project, and we can talk about that. The lockers themselves were, in the last five years or so, they've certainly went down a little bit.
Not because of weather conditions.
They're not terrible, believe me. I've seen worse, as you know, down the road. We certainly have bigger issues, but I've noticed a little bit here lately.
It's also, like, we talk about doors here. Our doors get opened in a week, probably as much as my door at home gets opened in a year. You know, like, we, we have a lot of use in certain areas. You know, we have other areas where there's misuse, and that's a whole different conversation. But when you have 400 to 500 people walking through a building every day, coming through all your doors every day, multiple times a day, there's a lot of wear and tear. And, you know, if you don't want to go into a situation where you're going to pay tremendous amounts of money to repair things, then you have to upkeep all the time. You know, and that, that's the purpose of, of putting this money aside for the last, I mean, this has been, you guys have been putting this money aside for a decade and a half, and then utilizing it. It's really, really, it's no different than, you know, having an emergency count at your house so that when some...
Oh, we've gotten in a lot of projects.
Yes.
Very helpful to the rest of the...
And projects that would have cost us a lot more money had they not been repaired as we went along. You know, when you get to where lockers are dangerous and you have to rip them out, you end up having to pass the bond to do those types of things. You know, when you get to where your bathrooms are leaking, now you're not only fixing the bathroom, you're fixing all of the damage from the water that leaked, and when your roofs are leaking, it's the same thing. So, you know, it's, this is no, it's not different than keeping up your home or your vehicles or whatever it is it may be. It just happens to be that we have 500 people coming through here every day, so sometimes the wear and tear numbers look a lot more extensive than they might be. You know, but it's, it's good practice and financially fruitful down the road because when you don't do these things, you end up doing $10 million roof replacements, you know, and passing a $10 million bond and having nothing different except for a new roof on your building is not really...
You did that, too.
Yeah, you know, so...
Now, we've used the repair, and not all districts have repair reserves like ours.
Yeah, and it's been used very well here.
Yes, it has.
I don't get, I mean, that was mostly done before I got here, but it's been used very well. And because of that, when our architect came, and he spent about two days here going through everything, and he pointed out a whole bunch of stuff because that's his job, but one of the things he told us when we met with him as an administrative team is, our building is in excellent condition, our plant and property is in excellent condition. That doesn't mean we don't need to repair and keep up with things, but when, when compared to schools all over Long Island, we're in really good shape. You know, now we just want to stay that way. So, if anybody has any questions.
Okay, so that'll happen later in the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Somewhere on that agenda. Okay. So, now we'll start the meeting. That brings us to our first hearing of visitors. At this time, we ask that questions and comments be kept to agenda items only. Does anybody care to address the board at this time? For any agenda item?
They're right over there.
They're right over there on the table. Nothing at this time? There's another hearing at the end of the meeting. That brings us to our consent agenda, which is the approval of our minutes from our budget forum on January 11th, our financial matters, which include our schedule of bills, our treasurer's report from December, our monthly budget status report of December, any transfers, extra classroom activity fund, we have some contracted services in here for student attending St. John the Baptist High School, and CSE's recommendation. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? A motion to approve?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Old business, we have any old business, Dr. Morrow? I don't think we have any old business.
Nope.
Seems like a long time. That brings us to our superintendent's report at this time. Dr. Morrow, it's all yours.
So, I had the, you know, I had the opportunity to meet with our first student advisory council prior, prior to our last budget meeting, actually. And it's comprised of students, an eclectic group of students from third to 12th grade. And the purpose of it is for me to have an opportunity to spend some time with them so that they can give me a student's perspective about things that were going on, and things that are going on, and their likes and dislikes. It was really a little bit of an icebreaker type session because it's the first one we did, and there was a lot of, you know, there were a lot of questions about why they were there and why they were chosen and things like that. And so, we talked a lot about, you know, the ground rules of when you're there, you know, making sure that you're, you know, you're attentive to what we're doing, and you're honest, and that we're respectful of each other's opinions because everybody has a different opinion and they're there to share it, and it's okay to have different opinions. And we talked a little bit about homework, that was the one topic that we actually talked about. And we will meet again in March and probably another time before the end of this year. I plan on meeting quarterly with them in future years. We send out an agenda beforehand, and I asked the principals to, you know, I don't want a student council group. Like, we meet with our student councils and our principals have conversations with them, and they share information with me. I really want a group, we had, you know, we started off where every student had to tell who they were, what grade they were, and what their favorite thing was. And the purpose of that was, because we had kids that social studies was their favorite thing, and others it was sports, and then some it was drama, and some it was foreign languages, and some was their home country, which was different than this one. And, you know, so we had a really, you know, the principals did a wonderful job of picking a really mixed group that's very representative of our district. And I enjoyed spending time talking with them, and I look forward to our sessions, which will be more focused on different things that are going on, like electives and, you know, different clubs and opportunities we have. And then I will share that information with my team so that as we're making decisions for the district, we can hopefully include that student voice more in what we do. So, it was a great opportunity. You know, the other thing that I just wanted to share was, we've been meeting with the North Fork group of superintendents monthly, and our last month, we had the business officials and the athletic directors meet also with us because we're talking more and more as we change out here. It's very interesting. You know, Greenport has stayed similar in their size, which was smaller than all of us. We have had some reductions in our size, we've slowed. Matituck-Cutchog is reducing more quickly now at this point in time. And, you know, our hope is that together, we can provide opportunities to our kids and to our district that we can't as individuals. So, we meet and we talk about shared sports, shared academic programs, the possibility of shared people. You know, we have people with expertise on our staff, whether it be an electrician, a plumber, an HVAC certified person, where other, the other districts may not, but they may have somebody with expertise on their staff. Equipment, you know, we have one district that purchased a split seater to help with the fields, and we don't all need a split seater that you use four times a year, but we can possibly share with each other. And different types of things like that. We're really at the very beginning stages, but it's an interesting conversation and one that hopefully we can move forward with. One of the things we did get some movement on, Matituck-Cutchog was able to free up a certain number of periods a day, and they are going to house a BOSI's program that our kids used to go all the way to Bellport, Chuck?
Either Bellport or...
Yeah, you know, for, and now if they want to be part of that, it's the construction, the carpentry construction program, which is three periods, you walk out certified. Now, our students that want to be part of that program will go to Matituck, and that's it, and then back from there. So, it will save us with, you know, we'll pay the BOSI's fee because BOSI's is still sending out an instructor to do it because the reality is, we don't have instructors for a lot of these things. But we won't pay the transportation all the way to wherever it was, and our kids can be more present at after-school activities because they're not sitting on a bus for an hour, or, you know, not leaving at 5:30, 6:00 in the morning to get there. So, we're looking at a lot of those opportunities, and it's exciting and interesting. It's very, very different for me because we used to house, you know, my prior district was large, so we housed a lot of those in-house. And, you know, the sharing and it's, is new to me, but it's also very interesting, and it provides unique opportunities that I didn't have in other places that we can hopefully better serve our kids and our community with.
I'm sure you that's all the history of the shares available to you, too.
Yes.
The recent ones and not so recent and long ago ones.
It's interesting that at one point, we shared more than we do now, and then we kind of got away from it a little, and now it seems that we're getting, you know, we're getting back to it. Some out of necessity, but the truth is, you know, it's, it will, I believe, and so do the other two superintendents, provide better opportunities for our kids and then hopefully for our community.
I think this board's on board with that, right? It worked when it worked.
Yeah.
It worked well, actually. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That brings us to personnel. The district treasurer's a scratch because that's not going to happen until next meeting. The district treasurer's a scratch because that's not going to happen until next meeting. Okay. Okay, so employees entering district, part-time, temporary, regions review, Brittany Panizzo, Jim Stahl, John Myers, central treasurer Eric Keel, substitute teacher Terry Adler. And then we've got the following for elementary after-school activities. Kate Panetta, Jackie Jimenez, Kelly Hilarri, Beth Weinberger, David Rydel, Ginger Johnson, Leah Leonard, Patty Melas, and Deb Kimmelman. That's it on the personnel recommendations. Wow. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Finance committee report? Anyone in finance, would you?
Nothing to report.
Well, we have to approve the revised corrective action plan.
We didn't have that.
Right?
What is it?
We have to approve the revised corrective action plan and submit it to the state?
Right.
Why was it, was it, was there just a little revision in it?
So what happened is I sent the original up and they didn't, basically the state didn't like one of the responses for the school lunch fund. We have surplus and I didn't put a date when it was going to be completed because it's, it's been an issue for a few years. Basically, I think it's going to take a few years. I'm worried about where the school lunch fund because typically before the pandemic, we were losing money.
Right.
So I don't want to spend all the fund balance down and then we would have negative fund balance because it should be self-sustaining. So I told them all this reason is there's a lot of question uncertainty. I wanted to do it slow and they didn't like it. They said I had to have an end date and it has to be within the year. So I changed it. It's not going to happen, but I don't think it's going to happen. So one date changed where it's going to be completed by June of '23 for the school lunch. Everything else is exact.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the revised corrective action plan?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Building committee report? We kind of just had that in the repair reserve. Nothing else but that?
That's it.
No? Okay, so that brings us to the repair reserve transfer. I need a motion to increase the budget in the amount not to exceed $600,000 by a transfer from the repair reserve to complete the proposed repair projects discussed in the public hearing this evening.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Policy committee report, Scott?
We have five on for adoption. Public complaints, school district officer and employee code of ethics, regular meetings, minutes, executive session, one regulation for student health services regulation, and we are removing the internal order because we're exempt due to the size of our enrollment. So I move we adopt them.
This, this is the second hearing, just so everybody's aware of the, the first reading was at last month's meeting. Scott, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
New business? No new business. That brings us to our second hearing on visitors. This time we will entertain comments and questions about any kind of school matters. Would anyone care to address the board at this time? Just come on up to the microphone, state your name, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm Katie Wallace. I spoke at the last meeting. I'm a parent of children in kindergarten and second grade. I'm here with a group of parents, some of whom who are here, many of whom could not attend but are here in spirit, who are advocating for the introduction of a dual-language program in the elementary school. The last time we were here at the budget meeting earlier in the month, we spoke, Marta spoke as well, about our, our feelings for need for the program. What we heard from the board in that session was recognition of, of the need and of the value of a dual-language program and that historically, when this has come up, that it wasn't necessarily a financial restraint, but more so in figuring out the right way to do it, how to integrate into the curriculum according to best practices and also how to do so in a way that wouldn't sacrifice anything else. So as a takeaway from that, we went back and we spoke to parents around neighboring districts to help understand how is this presenting in their own schools. And we learned a lot of information. I have here notes consolidating feedback we heard from parents and this is sort of in their own words, sharing their feedback. I can share copies with this if that's okay with everybody, so you can take a look at it. And then I can also summarize.
Thank you.
And if you recall, Dr. Morris was going to speak with his administrators about it as well.
Okay. Awesome. But.
And surrounding administrators.
Okay. That's, that's been helpful. And, and we kind of kept it in the parents' book, again, you know, I'm sure this is their interpretation, but to summarize, it does, it does seem like there is across the North Fork, a Spanish language or dual-language program at the elementary school level at some level in every district. And that includes Greenport, Oyster Ponds, Ketchogue, Riverhead, also Shelter Island, West Hampton Beach, and then also the Pecan Community School. What that looks like varies. The common themes that we heard is that there is, in every case, a dedicated teacher and that there is weekly instruction. In some cases, and what we sort of deemed in the feedback from parents is maybe the best practices, looking at like Ketchogue and Shelter Island, also Pecan Community School, it's either an extended session each week or multiple sessions and that it started at a young level, so from preschool or kindergarten. In some cases, I think in Greenport and Oyster Ponds, it's not introduced until the older elementary school ages, maybe like fourth, fifth, and sixth. And the feedback also was overwhelmingly positive across the board. All the parents we spoke to said they, they hear their kids at home, you know, speaking, singing songs in Spanish. And I think in every case, Spanish was the, the dual-language program and, you know, they really appreciated the programs. And, you know, where there was feedback, in, in their words again, was, you know, in the cases that it was maybe lighter, that they would want more, more time, more time during the school day, also reinforcement in home, at home. So wanted to share this with the group and, you know, hope that it can help get a sense, at least a picture of what's happening and how at least parents in the other districts are responding.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else care to approach the board?
I'm Marta, my daughter's superintendent. I just wanted to piggyback on what she said. One of the things that I thought was really interesting, I forget which school it's on, but it'll probably be on the sheet, is that they are having the teachers, actually, I think it might be the kindergarten, maybe K through three, are going to one of the sessions. I don't know how that would work with Southhold or if that would work, and are, they are actually taking, sitting through and doing the second language with students. So I thought that was kind of interesting because I know at least for my daughter and her kindergarten class, that her teacher is not bilingual. So I thought at least for any of the teachers that don't speak Spanish, that was, this would be a great way to have them learn a little bit and be able to communicate, especially at the younger ages where the students maybe don't know as much English. I just thought that that was interesting, that they're, they're kind of having the kids go and the teachers and then they're all learning together. So.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to address the board? Can I just ask, did any of you speak with Mrs. O'Neil in the elementary school about this?
Yeah.
We did.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure she's not blindsided by this.
No, she told us to come here.
Okay.
She actually contacted me. I, I told her to tell you to come here. And then she has reached out, she happens to be one of the presidents of the Elementary Principals Association for Suffolk County. So she has reached out to all the principals as I reached out to all the East End superintendents. And it's going to be interesting to compare the information because about four or five of them gave me write-ups, one of which I saw already is exactly what you got.
She was like, awesome.
Well, you know what it is? Listen, you get, it's like you said, you know, this is what people believe they have. What we believe we have and what we have are sometimes slightly different, you know, but I do have write-ups from a handful of them and I have a few others that, you know, they actually asked a couple of superintendents who are thinking about similar things, asked me to compile it, which I'll probably do next week, and then share that with all of them, you know. But it really, like, the one thing that I could tell you is it varies greatly, like greatly, from once a month to after-school, like, some of them have solely after-school programs that are optional. Others, you know, are looking to add a language. Others, having had it for a number of years, feel that they should have done it differently because by giving one language, they phased out all their other languages. So there's a lot of, you know, I've, I've been given a lot of interesting feedback and I'm looking forward to kind of putting it all together and then comparing it with what you guys share with me. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's just in case you have a, it sounds like there's at least one staff member back in here to come on and listen.
Yeah.
You can go up to the microphone, okay? I'm sorry, that's just, there's.
Yeah.
I am, I'm Dr. Balkanback. I am a parent of a second grader. So I just, I just really have a question about sort of how the process of that, I'm new to being a parent of a young kid, so how does the process of these things work? I love that this idea that we're getting parent feedback, we're getting superintendent, principal, everybody's got a different perspective on it, obviously, but I'm just curious more about just how, what we can do to help, any information we can provide, what's the process to try to, you know?
I think you've done that.
Inch forward, you know, whatever it is.
I think you've certainly put a lot of time.
Probably finding, finding slot to do it, really the time, right? I mean, that's, that's.
Time, resources?
Yeah, resources.
You know, the, the day, it's really, we're just board members.
No, I know, and it's more just my ignorance about how these things work and that's really my question.
And the focus really now is on the elementary, it's on the younger grades. This isn't high school issue. So it's, we really, I guess, have to get Ellen very involved and.
So the process is, you know, pretty much what you see. You know, it's brought to our attention, then we gather as much possible information as we can about it. And then we see whether we can possibly fit it, afford it, get somebody to teach it, all of those different pieces, you know?
Practical pieces.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's the, there's the philosophical and then there's also the practical, you know? You know, I would love to drive a Cadillac, I drive a Jeep. You know, that's just, you know, that's the philosophical and the practical, you know? So the process is exactly what you're seeing and you guys are a part of it. So you're seeing some of it from the inside and some from the outside, you know? And then obviously the elementary school will be very involved with, in speaking with Mrs. O'Neil, you know, she believes anything that would benefit our kids is good, you know? So that isn't, yeah. You know, so that's a real easy one, you know what I mean? Like, it's not, there's no adversary here for you.
How many people do we have in this district who teach Spanish, who are qualified or certified?
We have two.
And they're in the upper.
Well, as teachers, we also have ENL teachers.
We have ENL teachers.
So that's cross like a.
Some who speak Spanish, some who don't. But I mean, as of, but again, on the elementary level, you don't need someone certified in Spanish. So there are.
Because, I mean, with our declining enrollment, the last thing we want to do is hire additional people, obviously. You know, when I got on the board in 2009, we had 1,100 K through 12th. We have under 700. So that's, doesn't make sense for a district that's been shrinking to hire new people. So we have to figure out how to use the people that we have better, I guess, or, or in a different way. But as a board member and a community member, it's, it's, it's hard to make a pressing case that with such shrinking enrollment, we need more employees. We have to do better with what we have.
Lots of creative.
I guess, is that, is that a fair?
We offer things that other districts don't offer. For instance, we have science in the elementary and they, and I remember when science became that, there was a group of parents and a group of teachers in the elementary school that felt it was important that science become a separate elementary school things. Same thing with orchestra. We offer orchestra and other districts don't offer orchestra at the elementary level. So there's gives and takes and there's only so many minutes in the day. So that's where the people that are trained professionals have to try.
That's where it gets tricky. That's where it gets tricky.
With, with the, the money guy, trying to figure out how to make it work.
So I assume there are, at some level, restrictions or rules about hours that have to be allotted to, right, but we're basically talking about specials, right? Specials, right? So there are certain things that have to be done at certain amount of time, right? Versus other things that have a little bit more flex?
Specials.
Right. So, so then it's a matter of just trying to figure out what the priorities are in those things that have some flexibility?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to sort of make sure I understood what.
Not necessarily a priority for another.
And I mean, I, I don't know, could there be a situation where some people want to do one thing versus another?
It's possible.
Electives at young grade, you know, at the younger grades is not simple. It's, that's tricky.
So we're, right, like, right now, we're in, in the, you know, the information gathering You know, once we get there, like, we would seek input, you know, from, from a larger group of the elementary, you know, parents. Typically, we do things through surveys or we sometimes have them in for meetings and, you know, so we would, because there's going to be a give and take. You can't add without taking away something. It's that simple. You know, we're not adding 40 minutes to the day. That's not going to happen. So, you know, when you get to that point where you're going to take and give, then you really want to hear as many voices as you possibly can so that people are understanding, you know, that they're not going to get two recesses a day, which is an important thing in this district and something that people worked very hard to have built into our elementary day, or whatever it may be. That's an example. Please don't quote me on that. We're not taking recess away.
No banning.
I want to be very clear on that, you know, but when you add something, you take and, and we're a good distance away from that right now. Like, right now, we got to figure out the structure first before we know exactly what that would mean. You know, to, to say, hey, we're taking some, this away would be incredibly premature and, and not something I'd be willing to do. You know, right now, we're looking at what other people have and then we, you know, we will try to figure out, you know, what we want and what will best fit in Southold because some of it is fit. You know, we don't all always get everything we want because some things can fit and some things can't. And then we'll go forward from there with working with people and taking input from our community and our parents and, and, you know, trying to figure that out in a way that, again, benefits us. You know, there's some districts, and I saw one on, one of yours, but I know I got it from one of the principals, where they start with one language and then they add another. There's others that wheel it, where they do, they break the year into thirds and they do, you know, ASL, Spanish, French, and you get all three. And then this way, when you go and, you know, do you master it? No. But a lot of the purpose of an elementary foreign-language program is exposure and not mastery. And then when you get to the higher grades and you have it every day, you know, so some of those are harder than others. Like, I worked in a different part of the island where I didn't have a hard time finding teachers and I still had a hard time finding ASL teachers, you know? So, again, we'll continue to work through it, you know, and that, that is the process to answer your original question.
Thank you. That's really.
What we're going through right now. It's not a fast process because we meet monthly. You know, this is our only regular meeting this month, you know? So it's, it's not as fast a process as some of us would like it to be. That's, that's the reality of it. But, you know, nothing that you guys have brought to us or asked for has been forgotten or will be, you know, pushed aside. We'll continue.
Obviously, any, any research, any information we can provide or help you with, you know, we are happy to do.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Don't get discouraged because we have taken things away. You know, when, when, when the, when the balance, when the balance is in favor of one over the other, we have collapsed programs because, so I just, I just don't want you collapsed programs, because, so I just, I just don't want you to, to be discouraged, that's all.
And like Dr. Moore said, things take time as well.
I just didn't want to ask, let me see. At what date this year is the new budget put into effect? Is that in May?
It's voted on in May.
Yeah.
The process started months ago.
I thought the process, well, the only time that they were listening was starting in January.
We have our budget meetings starting in
We start well before that.
February, March.
There's fixed budget numbers.
The school's been working on.
So it will go to, if it were to be added this year, it would go to vote in May, but before that, basically between now and then, is the times that we would be coming in if we have something to share about it.
You can even send, you don't have to wait necessarily to a meeting, you can just send it to me. You know, I'm compiling it, and I meet with Ellen, and we look at it, and she's compiling stuff that she's going to then eventually give to me. I share it with the board.
If you look at the calendar on the website, it'll tell you which are budget hearings and which are regular meetings.
Okay.
And sometimes we piggyback and do them
One after the other.
One after the other.
So the ones that are open to the public are
Yeah, all of our meetings are always open to the public.
Even the budget meetings, yeah.
Even the budget meetings are open to the public.
But, but again, and you're welcome to come to the meetings, but if, if you find something that you believe is important, send it to me. Don't wait, you know. I'd prefer, you know, that's how I reached out to all the superintendents. I actually reached out to them through an East End group meeting, and then they emailed me kind of a, you know, a description of that program.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And when would you decide, I guess, along the way, when would you decide, okay, we are going to send a survey to the parents, or we're thinking about doing it this way? Like, how much of that is coming from the parents versus coming from Mrs. O'Neil and you deciding, like, would it, would it be the sort of thing where you would say, okay, teachers or parents are going to decide if they want their kids to do science or Spanish? Or, like, how do you decide how you're going to implement it?
I don't think we're there yet.
I don't, there isn't really a deadline for that. And the truth is, it could be after, you know, like, exactly how we do it might, you know, we might continue to figure that out throughout the year, and it may even change year to year. And the fact is, it's not going to be like, you have to have science in elementary school, a certain amount every week. So there's not an option to not take it, to take something else, you know. So there, I don't know if it would be a do you want this or that. It would, you know, be more along the lines of, you know, that there'd be an understanding that some things may be taken out, and we would probably figure, I would hope to figure them out before we shared that with parents.
Okay.
Because I don't want people voting blind and then coming back, and that's not a pretty thing.
Yeah, that was sort of maybe more my thought.
Yeah, yeah. So we would have to be able to put together enough information to put, to share a concrete explanation of what we're going to be doing before people could tell us whether they agree with it or not.
Okay, okay. That makes sense.
Thank you. Anyone else? That brings us to our board member commentary. Brendan Mullin, how's it going down there?
Good, are you?
Good, thank you. What's going on?
Um, not too much. So last week, we, we had a badminton tournament, and we allowed everyone to sign up, and the only requirement was they bring a can of food, which would be donated to cast. And we had, I think it was 40 or like 50 people sign up, and we had like three big boxes of canned food to bring to cast. And we had a whole tournament. It was like a two-hour tournament, and we had one winner at the end, and it was, it was really fun.
Who won?
It was Joanna Anderson and Brian Schill.
Two tennis players.
Yeah, of course.
They're two tennis athletes. What else going on? Nothing else?
Um, right now, we're planning another sort of event like that for February, I think February 17th. I'm not sure the date yet, but maybe volleyball or something like that instead.
You having your semi-formal this year?
Yeah, we're having a semi-formal, and we are working on planning that. It's going to be beginning of March, a little later, but it might be like, I think we're thinking red carpet theme or something like, along the lines of that. We're not 100% sure yet, but that's what we're working on.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Scott?
I'd just like to wish luck to the parents of seniors as the, as the acceptances and the come in and the wait lists come in. I know it's a nervous time in our house, but we'll make it through. That's it.
I love sitting in this room. It's gorgeous. And that's all I have to say.
Brian.
Good.
I want to thank everybody for coming. It's refreshing to have people at our meetings, because it's usually kind of just us in empty chairs. And we like it here, because it's smaller and more private than the auditorium. We do sometimes meet in the auditorium, so check if we're not here and you come to a board meeting, we're not hiding from you. If there's student accomplishments or achievements, we do it down there, because we like to show off the auditorium as well. I just want to mention, to bring it all together, you know, Spanish or a second language in the elementary school and shared services, and we did shared services really, really well. Did you do shared classes when you were in school here, Marta? So even way back when, there were shared classes, and then we got away from it because of the increase in enrollments in the districts in Southold and Greenport. And then, as you all know, and everybody's aware, for several years, we shared a lot with Greenport. I think it's the only way that we're going to be able to offer our students what they need in their life. And it goes to what John said, we're not in a position to hire staff when our enrollment declined. We have, we have a tax cap. The worst, the worst thing that could happen is our budget goes down, and our community's been very supportive. I know I'm talking a little bit long, and I apologize, but the reason our budget pass is, believe it or not, and I take this very personally, is not because of parents of students, interestingly enough. It's because of our senior citizens, because we've checked the roles, we checked to see who comes and votes. So we're very conscious of the fixed incomes of a lot of our community here. So we walk that very fine line of providing for our students, but there's a financial responsibility we have to our district. And John has said, meeting after meeting, how much our community supports us. And again, it's because of the entire community and not just families with students. So that being said, there's, there's that kind of thing to do. And with the declining enrollment, you don't want to lay people off. You don't, there's things you have to, you have to balance. So I would suggest that when Dr. Moore meets with the East End administrators, that we get back to sharing. I would also ask you that maybe you and I can meet with Senator Palumbo, because Mr. Gambrog and I met with Senator Laval many, many annually, and he was very supportive of our district. He found member item money out of the budget for our districts that helped us really achieve, John knows, building
Senator Laval was very good to this district, very good.
We would not have Wi-Fi in the system if it wasn't for him, because we had no band, we didn't have enough electricity at the time. And because of his funding, we got a lot of things accomplished in this district. So maybe you and I could go meet with him and knock on his door. There's, there's ways, there's, there's ways to get things done. And I think it's very impressive that you all put so much time into your homework and brought it to us, and we appreciate it very much. I think that's it. There's no concerts or plays or anything like that in the next few weeks, I don't think, to put out there, right? No. Okay.
Elementary concert was last week.
Right. So we're done with concerts till the spring. And hopefully no snow days. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming. I think February, like, 15th is our next meeting. Oh, yes, February 15th.
All right there.